The June 14th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of our city council meetings, which are generally held the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for citizens to address the council in the open podium. And that portion of the meeting would last from 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to address the council at that period of time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the date of the meeting with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. And if there's time after scheduled speakers, we will open things up to other people that would like to address the council. These portions are not televised or recorded. If you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office. We're going to start today with a few proclamations and presentations, and the first thing on the agenda tonight is the Eden Prairie Players' Proclamation. And I'd like to call up -- is Reed Shulkey here? Yes, there you are, Reed.
Good evening. My name's Reed Shulkey. I'm past chair of the Eden Prairie Players. And on behalf of the committee, we'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for the recognition as well as the support we've received from this council and past councils over the last 20 years. As we look at our organization and how we've grown over the last 20 years, there are a few key people we would really like to recognize. Long-term producers, Ann Crawford and Liz Michelson were instrumental with our organization. M. Stark, Marilyn Rukie, I believe is how it's pronounced, and Tom Mayke have been our band directors for our summer musicals in the past. Shelley Smith, Jay Ludwig, Robin Seaton, and Tara Demmer have been past chairs of our organization, and they should all be recognized for their work as well. We'd also like to thank and recognize the city staff, past and present, that we've worked with and who've supported us over the years. Lindsay Danhauser is doing a fabulous job for us currently. Lori Obi-Ozar, I always say it wrong, sorry. Brenda Yuting, Sandy Wertz, Tia Mann, and Jay Lathammer. We appreciate your help and all of your support. I'm sure there's not a lot of community theater awards for Parks and Recreation Department ads, so we do appreciate your help and your support. As we move forward, I'd just like to say that we look forward to growing our organization by expanding the opportunities for residents to become involved in theater. And in the last few years, we've added a children's theater program, which attracts basically standing-room-only audiences out at Riley Barn. This year, we found the need to actually add two additional performances this year. We're also adding a second children's program. Hopefully this year, we're working on the details of that. And this year, three of our teenagers that have gone through our children's programming actually created and are heavily involved in designing a teen theater workshop, which they've just started. And hopefully that will come to fruition more this year. We've done one workshop so far. Also, our one-act program, which is also held out at Riley Barn, continues to grow. Last year was the first year that we solicited original one-acts, and we were pretty overwhelmed by the response that we received. We received over 149 original scripts from all over the country. This year, we've received 472 original scripts from almost every state in America, as well as Canada, England, Israel, and Australia. So we received quite a number of scripts this year to go through. We've chosen the scripts that we're going to be performing later in the fall. And again, we found the need that we're going to be adding two additional performances for that as well this year. This weekend, obviously, we opened our summer musical with Bye Bye Birdie, which is why we are somewhat underrepresented. Otherwise, you would have nearly 100 people in the audience. But they are probably all out at the barn right now rehearsing out of the rain. Summer musicals require nearly 3,000 to 4,000 man-hours of volunteer time. That's why we ask that you support these people, because they come home from work and then they go to the theater for three, sometimes four, hours a night, four nights a week, for six weeks. They put in a lot of time and effort to get the shows on, as well as building sets, putting together costumes, and so forth. One person that we'd really, really like to recognize with Bye Bye Birdie is Matt Kraft. He's been with us for quite a long time. He's done work with the Guthrie. He's also done work with some independent film. He has taken on multiple, multiple roles in this production, including stage manager, star of the show, and assistant director. So it's been a unique challenge for him this year, basically doing that. Again, we'd like to thank you for this recognition, and we hope to see all of you at one of our upcoming shows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reed. A quick question for you. You said you've got over 400 scripts. Was that for the one-act?
For the one-act, yes.
And how do you solicit scripts? How do people in Israel know that you're looking for a script?
There is a really good service online in Minneapolis called the Playwrights Workshop. We put our scripts on their page, and it tends to just get shared. And other playwriting organizations in Los Angeles and New York picked it up and put it on their site, and all of a sudden, we got a little overwhelmed this year, so.
Well, it sounds like your whole program is growing by leaps and bounds. Didn't you also get some kind of grant recently for some strategic planning?
Actually, and we'd like to thank the Eden Prairie Foundation. We did receive a grant. It's not our grant, it's the city's grant, for stage equipment. Over the years, we've received lighting equipment from the Eden Prairie Foundation as well. And the staging that we'll be using out there will be for our children's shows and the one-acts. It'll also be shared with us, and Soul Fire, and I believe the senior center will be using the same staging equipment. But it will make that space a little bit more professional-looking as we move forward in the barn.
Okay, great. Thank you, Reed. Speaking of making things professional-looking, we aren't going to actually hand you the proclamation tonight because it's not framed. We will get it framed and professional-looking, and we will give it to you. But I'd like to take a moment to read the proclamation. And you don't have to stand there during the whole time if you don't want to. You looked anxious to leave the podium, which is odd for somebody in theater.
Relax.
Whereas the mission of the Eden Prairie Players is to enhance the quality of life for the people of greater Eden Prairie through the theater experience by inspiring, nurturing, challenging, educating, and empowering artists, audiences, and volunteers; and whereas the Eden Prairie Players provide residents with access to high-quality theater performances; and whereas thousands of Eden Prairie residents participate in our programs each year by attending performances, volunteering, and acting in the shows; and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the Eden Prairie Players in this their 20th season providing live theater in Eden Prairie; and whereas Community Theater Day recognizes the Eden Prairie Players as an integral part of our community, now therefore the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim June 17, 2011, to be Community Theater Day, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on this, the 14th day of June 2011. So June 17, that's Friday, is that opening night? So we'll make sure we have the proclamation to you at least by then. Thank you.
Does it say it won't ring that name?
Yes, that's part of the deal. So thank you very much for your contributions to the community. We greatly appreciate all that you do. Thank you. Next, we have Rob Reynolds, our police chief, that has an award.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. As you know, crime is a community issue, and we also, we oftentimes engage our community in helping us fight this issue. Now generally, the things we ask them to do are things like help eliminate the opportunity for crime, call us if they see something suspicious, things along this nature. But once in a while, every once in a while, someone will go above and beyond anything that we would ever ask them to do to help us in our efforts. And tonight, we're here to recognize two men who did such things. So, Your Honor, if you'd like to join me here, we can present the awards. I'd like to call up Mr. John Finch and Mr. Joseph Passifero. Tonight, we will be awarding a letter of recognition. A letter of recognition is awarded by the Police Department to an employee or a citizen for quality performance which exemplifies the excellence in service to community. Letter of recognition. On the afternoon of May 17, 2011, Susan Schumacher was in the Cub Foods parking lot unloading groceries from her cart into the back of her car. She heard a noise, turned, and saw a young man running away with her purse. She yelled for help and began pursuing the suspect on foot. John Finch, who was also in the Cub Foods parking lot, started chasing the suspect toward the loading dock area of the building. He climbed a retaining wall and located the suspect in a nearby wooded area. He yelled to the suspect to stop while calling 911 on his cellphone. The suspect then ran through an intersection and entered the RE/MAX building with Mr. Finch following. Inside the building, Joseph Passifero was sitting at his desk when he saw the suspect run by his window, followed by Mr. Finch. He heard Mr. Finch yell that the man was a purse snatcher and that we should stop him. Mr. Passifero chased the suspect through the building and managed to grab him right outside. Mr. Finch arrived, and they stayed with the suspect until officers arrived and arrested him. During the chase, the suspect dropped the purse in a nearby intersection. Mrs. Schumacher was able to retrieve all the contents of her purse. For their quick thinking, bravery, and persistence in helping to apprehend a criminal, I hereby present John Finch and Joseph Passifero with Eden Prairie Police Department's Letter of Recognition.
John, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all you've done.
And I'd also like to recognize Susan Schumacher, the person whose purse was stolen, is also with us tonight in the audience. So, thank you.
Third, we have tonight a presentation from the Conservation Commission about their Green Step Cities program. And Regina Heron of the city staff is going to introduce the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council. I'm Regina Rojas-Heron, either one works. Tonight, we have, as you said, the Conservation Commission. They've been working on the Minnesota's Green Step Cities program and doing a lot of research and interviewing different cities and the state as well, and finding out just more about the program. And this evening, we have Laura Jester, the chair for the Conservation Commission, as well as, I believe, all the representatives of the commission here in the audience tonight. They will be giving the presentation, and I will be available to answer any questions you might have. At the end of the presentation, there is a resolution available for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having us out this evening. I'd like to share a little bit of information with you about the Green Step Program and why the Conservation Commission thinks that this is a fantastic opportunity and the perfect next step for the city of Eden Prairie. Before I go any further, I just want to introduce the other members of the Conservation Commission that are here this evening. We have Greg Olson and Anthony Peeny, Pert Lawton, Sue Brown, Ray Daniels, and Prashant Trichandi with us also this evening. So what is the Green Step Cities Program? This is a new voluntary challenge and assistance program for Minnesota cities to easily implement energy conservation and environmentally sustainable best management practices throughout the city in both public and private sectors. This program was developed by a strong coalition of partners, and it's currently still supported by all of these partners. And this includes the League of Minnesota Cities, the Minnesota Police and Control Agency, the Minnesota Office of Energy Security, Clean Energy Resource Teams, Great Plains Institute, Isaac-Walton League, and the Urban Lands Institute. So as you can see, it's greatly supported, and it is ongoing. Green Step Cities is Minnesota-specific, and it's geared for small cities just like Eden Prairie. One of the best benefits is that it provides recognition and award. In fact, the League of Minnesota Cities Conference this week, I believe in Rochester, will be recognizing some of the Green Step Cities that have already gone through this program. So it's an award program. It's also an assistance program, and if you go on the Green Step Cities website, it's actually extremely impressive how much information and support there is for each of the best management practices that should be implemented through the program. And I'll get back to that in a little bit. It also offers peer learning. So our neighboring, some of our neighboring cities are also doing, going through the Green Step Program, and so city staff is able to learn from other city staff what's working and what's not working in neighboring cities. It provides, it allows flexibility, and this is important, it allows flexibility in timing. There are no deadlines or timelines associated with this program. As I said, it's completely voluntary. And it also allows flexibility with the actual implementation of the best practices. So, you know, every city is different. What works one place is not exactly going to work in another place. So as we understand it, the PCA has been flexible in how one city implements a best practice or another. And it also promotes innovation and actual action, not just talking the talk, you're actually walking the walk and putting these practices into place in a city. So it's moving forward towards sustainability within a city. Who else is doing, let's see, sorry. One of the best things about this is that it recognizes the accomplishments of our wonderful 2040-15 program. As you know, this program is ongoing. It's been very successful, and we continue to complete the different phases of the 2040-15 program. It builds right off of the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, which, Mayor, you signed in your last tenure with the city. In fact, this program actually grew out of that, the Mayor's Protection Agreement. The cities were signing those agreements and kind of saying, okay, what's next? What do we do? So this program is helping those cities actually walk through those steps. So it'd recognize our accomplishments that we've already done through that program. And it would showcase Eden Prairie as a leader in conservation and its commitment to sustainability. We're already the number-one best place to live. This just moves us further towards that sustainability. And it gives credit, like I said, for many of the practices that we already have in place. Not only are we doing energy conservation in the city of Eden Prairie, but also stormwater best management practices, native plantings, rain gardens, those sorts of things. So there's a lot of things that we've already done, and it gives recognition to those things. As I mentioned, many of our neighbors are also going down the path of becoming a Green Step City. A few of them include Hopkins, Edina, St. Louis Park, Bloomington, Apple Valley, Falcon Heights, Rochester, and about 16 others. And all of those cities are found on the Green Step Cities website. And then you can click on the city and find out what they have done, what practices have they implemented, and it's another avenue for peer learning. There are five components within this program. They cover land use, transportation, building and lighting, environmental management, and economic and community development. We're actually very fortunate. Karen Kurt, who is a staff member in the HR department here, is working on her master's degree, and she decided to research and study the Green Step Cities program and how it pertains to Eden Prairie in particular, and to see how far down the path we already were. So we're already ahead of the ball. A lot of the research has already been done. As you can see here in the next couple of charts I'm going to show you, on the left, you'll see the component that we're talking about. So the first one is building and lighting. And then each of the rows show the different best management practices that you can choose from. The orange shows practices that the city of Eden Prairie has already implemented, according to Karen's survey. We haven't actually approached the PCA with this information, so there may be one or two where we need a couple of more items taken care of. But for the most part, these are items that the city of Eden Prairie has already done. So as you can see with building and lighting, we need two. You can see over on the right, we need two of those. We have completed two, but we haven't done the top one, which is required. So we would still need to go back and do the efficient and existing, efficient existing public buildings. And as part of our 2040-15, we're already very well far down that road, but we do need to input some data into the PCA's website. We also have land use. We're missing the required one there, but we have completed three others. In transportation, we're missing the required one, but have completed two others. The next slide, environmental management. We need one of the required ones, but we've completed two of the required ones there in that category. And then down in economic and community development, we have a couple of required steps there. These are not necessarily onerous implementing, things to implement at all. We need a total of 16 best practices as a category A city because of our population. We've already done 13 of them, but we have six of the required ones. So once we get the required ones done, we would have all of these requirements completed. These are the steps of the Green Step Cities program. First, build community interest, and that's been done through our Conservation Commission. We've actually spent a lot of time looking into this program. We've had a presentation from PCA staff, and also the chair of the Edina Energy and Conservation Commission, as they are working towards this as well. And then all of the pertinent staff were interviewed by Karen Kurt, and then the department directors, all, to my knowledge, believe that this is something that the Eden Prairie, that the city of Eden Prairie could easily do within the next couple of years. We have identified, completed, and missing practices, as I just showed you. And we have identified the responsible individual to manage the project. As you can see in your resolution, you are supposed to identify a staff person, and that would be Regina Rojas. So we're at the point of adopting a resolution at the city council level, and then we go on to post information on our best practices that have already been implemented. Then, it's not required, but the city, we would develop a work plan here at the city as to what staff and what timing we would take to implement the rest of the best practices that are needed, and then we would get recognized. So this would take some staff resources, and that is known. But the department directors believe that this is a step that the city should take, and that this is very doable, and given the benefit to the community and the environment, we believe that this is really a step in the right direction.
Great. Thank you, Laura. You want to stand there for questions? Maybe Regina, you could come up too. Council, any questions? Councilmember Aho.
Would you have any estimate in terms of the impact on staffing and cost of the city to implement this program in terms of what you think it would cost? Or would you think that there might be a net reduction in costs overall? Or would there be cost initially and then a reduction further in the future?
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll see if Regina can answer that.
We haven't done a cost analysis, cost-benefit analysis at all as part of this, but, you know, we do feel that it could be done with current staff, current staff time, that it wouldn't take any additional, you know, funds to complete any of the best practices that might be required. As we've seen with the 2040-15 program alone, that that's cut down on cost for the city. So it's very possible that it could have ultimate benefit, but it just hasn't been analyzed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I assume that we would continue to do our 2040-15 even while doing this, because I would hate to see that process stopped to do another one. Is that correct, that we would be then doing both?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, absolutely. This is just an extension of that program, and we would get recognized for what we have already done with that program and continue to do. So it's definitely, it's a next step. It's a perfect fit for what we've already done.
Okay. Well, as long as we will be continuing to do the 2040-15, it sounds great.
Councilmember Wixter.
Yeah, I think this sounds like a wonderful program, and it certainly sounds like an extension of what we're already doing and an extension of what you had signed on for the city to do a long time ago. So I think it sounds great. I certainly support it.
Councilmember Case.
I'm on the page where the different best practices that we had already met, I think, are in orange or yellow, the ones we have not so angry.
Yes, the ones that we have done.
Okay. I was just confused, like, and wondering then who determines at what point we've met the best practice? Because comprehensive planning and implementation under land use, I think we're second to none in that across the Twin Cities. So who would determine in what way we would suddenly get to be checked off?
As you look further into the chart, there's a lot more detail. And this particular required step, it's as simple as in your zoning code explicitly saying that it is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and just having that one statement. And then you've checked off that required step.
We're about two seconds away from checking that.
Exactly, exactly.
Are we then, is there a set of criteria, and then we determine ourselves that we've met it, and then someone else, we present our documentation, and then someone at some higher level says, yes, indeed, you have met the 16?
That's correct. It would be the documentation with the PCA within their website.
I completely support it just from an environmental standpoint, but it also seems like a really nice way to kind of organize what we've done. And if anything, just quickly reconfigure a few things that we're doing to address this, and then suddenly we get this package. People are into labels, and if we were labeled compliant and exemplary, I just think that's a great idea. So I really support this. Thank you for your time, both of you, and the whole commission. I think all of you are doing really, really nice work.
Yeah, thank you very much. I am also very supportive of this, obviously. It's something near and dear to my heart, and I'm very glad that there's a program like this now. And Councilmember Case, you kind of took my question, because we've gone through so many comprehensive guide plan processes over the years that I've been here. It's hard to believe that we haven't met the criteria, and it sounds like it is something very simple. I hope that there are some of the things that we will have to do that will be a bit more of a stretch, so that we are actually making positive steps. I hope it's not just a matter of just accounting for things we're already doing. I hope there is some room for growth, so that we can make some improvements. The Conservation Commissioners feel the same. And where we have done things, or it's easy to get it done, we may be asking to go a step further even, or push it even further.
Great. Thank you. I have been reading your Conservation Commission meeting minutes, and there has been some discussion about recycling. Is recycling part of this in the Green Steps program?
You know, one thing, Ms. Mayor, that we were a little bit surprised at is that it doesn't address everything that we would like it to address. I can't remember specifically where recycling may lie in here, but it's certainly nothing that yelled out to us, oh, that would be so great. So it's mostly energy conservation, which we're already going down that path. But our commission is extremely committed to increasing recycling rates in the city, in parks, and residential, and city buildings, and everywhere. And we're working on that kind of in a separate track, so.
There is a solid waste reduction under environmental management category. I'm assuming that we pull in recycling.
Well, thank you. Are there any other questions? And if not, is there a motion?
I would like to move to adopt the resolution authorizing the city of Eden Prairie to participate in the Minnesota Green Step Cities program.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for all your work, Conservation Commission. Great idea to get us involved in that. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, I know that our city manager, I had asked him to give us a report on the impact of a possible state shutdown on city government, so he'll be addressing that under his report. Is there anything else to add? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held today? Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, May 17th?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, I'd like a motion for approval of the city council meeting minutes for that same date. Move approval.
Second.
Anything to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Consent calendar, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Anything to question or pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing tonight, which is T-Mobile. Uh, Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, our first public hearing is a request for site plan review from T-Mobile, and they are asking for a telecommunications tower on an existing hundred-foot XL energy tower for a total of a hundred and ten feet. And the a hundred and ten-foot tower would require a setback of four hundred and forty feet, and the existing tower is three hundred and twenty feet from a residentially zoned district. However, our city code does allow that a tower setback can be reduced at the discretion of the council to allow integration of the tower into an existing structure such as a steeple, a light standard, or a power pole. That concept is, is known as co-location. Uh, there still is a requirement for a site plan review, and official notice of the public hearing was published in the June 2nd edition of the Eden Prairie News. The hundred and twenty-day review period expires on August 12th, and on May 23rd, the Plan Commission voted six-zero to recommend approval of the developers' option at their meeting. And I'm not sure, okay, and we have a representative from T-Mobile here to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Any questions of, um, I'm sorry, your name?
Hi, I'm Carrie Brown with KTB Consulting and T-Mobile. Good evening.
Okay. Any questions of Carrie or Mr. Getchell?
I have questions of staff, but do we, um, want to have a public hearing first, or do, okay.
I don't, no, go ahead. Ask your question, that's fine.
Um, well, this is to Mr. Getchell, then. And my, and I, I support this, and in fact, on, in the technological world we live in, I think this feels fairly perfunctory, but, but my question really has to do with just the arbitrariness of, of any height. So we have this, this, um, code rule that we've been following, one-to-four slope, and we've clearly deviated from that when we felt, um, our former councils felt, for whatever reason, that it was okay to put a taller tower in. So I, I don't have a problem, the hundred foot's been there, and people evidently haven't, um, expressed a whole lot of complaint. Now we're just adding ten. Next week, if someone else comes in and says, well, you added ten there, you got to add ten here, and certainly the precedent piece is a problem, why not twenty? Why not twenty-five? I mean, at some point, what, what is it about? And as, as we go technologically forward, I was under the impression as cells became more filled or packed, you could break apart and have more and more cells, and it would lower towers everywhere, 'cause everyone would be, you know, the cells would be a tighter, compacted cell. Um, I, I don't know enough the technology, know if this isn't a higher transfer station something. It doesn't really bother me, it's just the idea that, you know, at the end of the day, this feels pretty arbitrary, and that's okay with me. If it's okay with all of you, I just wanted some reaction from you, Mr. Getchell.
I, I think there's probably two things. One would be that the, the four-to-one in, in the code, I think, deals a lot with new towers, and I think there was a time in this city and many others where there was a construction of many new towers and, and many monopoles. So I think a lot of the code was based around the construction of new poles, and the variance can deal with the co-location piece. The other part technologically, I think T-Mobile, maybe it would be good to hear from you a little bit about the, what coverage issues this solves, or maybe where an example of your company's at with coverage, because that's always a question we have, and I think that was addressed at Plan Commission as well, as to other options they may have had, or what we may be, would we be seeing more of these? And I know this is only one company, but I think it would be good to maybe get a little bit of background from you on that.
You bet. Um, one thing about the XL towers, when we are able, you know, they are prolific in the area, uh, they make it an opportunity for us to co-locate on those instead of building the monopoles. Um, and by doing that, um, we do have some limitations to use those XL poles. We are only allowed per XL to use the lattice towers, which are, you know, like the four, for, uh, poles going up, or the four irons. Um, the, we, at one time, were able to use the monopole towers that they had, but they caused problems in maintenance, so they stopped allowing us to use those. Um, but what now we've come across is, is that the antennas are, because of the interference with the lines, um, and the workmen being able to use the lines, uh, we are only able to go on the very top of an XL pole or down below them. Um, as far as XL, I'm sorry, uh, above the lines or below the lines. We can't go in between anymore, and so that does cause a height, you know, uh, we're not actually extending the tower except for our antennas. Um, so we're just putting the antennas on top. We do have to have a structure to hold the antennas, but it's not extending actual height up above the antennas. So in this area, we chose this site due to the fact that we had a landlord that was agreeable to a lease, um, and that XL tower was allowing us to use that tower. It was structurally sound. We went through all the structural engineering and that kind of thing to make sure that it would be able to structurally hold the antennas. Um, and so those two factors worked out in our favor on that one. We also are up on a little bit of a hill. There has been discussion of us, um, moving to the east, to the other, into the commercial area, from our industrial area into that commercial area where we could use the XL pole there. We do drop approximately thirty feet. Um, if you see in your, your packages, your existing and, um, proposed coverage maps, um, it does show that we are very centered in the ring that we need to cover. Um, you can see that all we get is outdoor coverage where we're at right now, and so by, by putting in this site, we're able to allow, um, to give, uh, indoor coverage for residences to the north. Um, so that does, the height is a, is a big plus for us there. Plus, the trees in that area are pretty tall, so it will block, um, it'll block a lot of view of that site. Um, and as it is going up a hill, and the XL tower is off to the left, most people won't even see it. So it, it just seemed like a very perfect spot for co-location.
Now, I haven't been up on the business section recently, but, um, AT&amp;T has a proposal to, to purchase T-Mobile. I don't know if that's gone through the regulatory process yet.
It has not yet.
Um, but if and when it did, um, does this impact, well, two things. Does that impact, um, this tower, but also your future towers? But also, we had an agreement, remember, back in the early nineties that was discovered that all lattice poles would be, um, changed over into monopoles, and we let them off the hook on that, but they said they pledged to attempt to replace all lattice with poles eventually. You know nothing of that, or would that impact?
Don't know that one. I'm sorry.
Let's ask the question, how long have you got on the lattice pole?
Right, right.
Council, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on this tower issue? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for site plan review on 2.93 acres.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, for Smith Douglas Moore House, Dunn Brothers, COA. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, COA Certificate of Appropriateness. And the, uh, Smith Douglas Moore House was designated as a historic preservation site in nineteen ninety-seven, and it's eligible for registration on the National Register of Historic Places. So that being so, if there is any, um, alterations that are needed, a public hearing and approval of a certificate of appropriateness, I'm sorry, is needed for any work. In this case, we are talking about a request for the approval of the demolition of a workshop building, which is in advanced state of dilapidation. And given the current condition of the building and the concern of the safety of the Dunn Brothers employees and the public, they are asking that the building be removed, and then prior to the removal of that building, any materials would be salvaged for reuse and conveyed to the Eden Prairie Historical Society. Since the workshop building was used to store trash, uh, trash bins, the, the, there's a request then to construct a trash enclosure as well on the site. So we would have a public hearing and then adoption of, um, a resolution. Also, the notice of the public hearing was published in the June 2nd Eden Prairie News and was sent to eighty property owners as well, and the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed plans and supports this request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Councilmember Nelson.
Have they talked at all about trying to reface, you know, to build the trash enclosure, but then, you know, face it with the original wood? Or is it, is it, um, are they going to do that? Or is the wood really sort of rotted and not able to do that? Or, um, are we trying, attempting to structurally not use it, but, you know, aesthetically reuse some of the original building?
Your Honor, Councilmember Nelson, there has been discussion about potentially reusing the wood for a future shed building if a new shed is, um, desired on the site at some point. The trash enclosure isn't a building per se, it does have a fence around it, and the intent is to match the existing fencing that's all, already screening other mechanical equipment on the site, and everyone thinks that's the more logical solution rather than using wood that was really intended for siding and trying to make that work for a fencing, and then the fences wouldn't match. So we would preserve the material and hope that there would be a future use for it, but at this point, it would just be stored.
Fine, thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
Um, I assume since this is the city-owned building that we're responsible for all the costs associated with doing, doing this. Do we have any kind of estimate of, on cost of the project?
I believe Mr. Lindahl may have been more involved in the specific discussions on the cost. I do not have, um, information on that this evening. Would you have anything?
I don't, I don't have specific numbers. It's actually being paid for through facilities, so the demolition and the construction of the fence will be paid for by the city.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
Basil Weisner, eighty-two ninety-three, Mitchell Road, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, the question I have is, is the shed part of the historical building? And do we have the right to tear that down? Or do we have to get approval from some other authority?
Good question. Staff?
Your Honor, councilmembers, Mr. Weisner, the answer to that is that we had to go through the Heritage Preservation Commission and get their recommendation on this. Um, since it's a locally designated site, it's not on the National Historic Register, it is eligible for that. So it didn't have to go through any process other than Historical Preservation Commission, which has recommended approval with the caveat that the materials be salvaged for potential future use, and then the city council needs to make the final determination.
Okay, I also heard that some of the material is going to the museum, and you said all the material is going to be salvaged. Which is it? Is it all or just part?
Your Honor, councilmembers, Mr. Weisner, some of the building material really isn't salvageable. It's deteriorated to the point where it's really rotted and wouldn't be salvageable. There may be some, you may be also hearing that there may be some materials inside the shed that actually belong to the Historical Society. I believe they had been storing some other artifacts within the building, and those would be moved to the museum. But, um, with regard to the, the siding and the other building materials, some of it is salvageable, and, and a lot of it is not. Unfortunately, it's gotten to the point where it would not be.
So it's my understanding that the Smith Douglas Moore House is not a national?
It's eligible. That's correct.
Correct.
Eligible, but it is not currently on the National Historic Register.
Will it be able to get onto the national once we remove the shed?
Yes, it's my understanding, when we look at these kinds of requests, we do look at the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which are the same standards that are used for National Historic Register sites. And that does allow the removal of buildings that have been deteriorated to this stage. And we did have an expert who's on contract with the city take a look at that and make sure that it, it needs.
I, I just don't want our city to get in trouble. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, it's a good question. Councilmember Case, do you have something to add to that?
Well, yeah, I actually, uh, Mr. Weisner, appreciate your question very much, and I'm glad that, um, people are concerned out there about, um, preserving historically significant buildings. Am I correct that it falls under the certified local government process because we have the Heritage Preservation Commission, which has listed it as historically significant? And that is precisely why it came before the council tonight, because we have this process that drove it to come here and then have this public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay. And the second thing is, um, I, living in an eighteen-eighty house, and I've reconstructed two eighteen-sixty granaries in the last ten years, um, I did walk through this shed and looking at the wood, and, and, um, other old timers, I'm beginning to be that myself out there, can confirm or deny this, but it looked to me about in the teens or the twenties, the wood. Uh, it's machine board, it's incredible board, actually. It's, uh, twelve inches wide and, um, sixteen to twenty feet long, tongue and groove. Actually, it's the overlapping, but, um, I don't know that, um, someone that wanted to spend thousands of hours like I did, taking apart a barn, could salvage this wood. Um, I don't think we want our city staff doing that. Number two, I don't know what we would do with it at that point. So I, I think my understanding is that some of the wood, if it can, if we can get it out of there and could be reused in kiosks or projects, it would be really neat to have it for that. Otherwise, um, it's a shed that got added sixty years after Mr. Smith built his house by some other owner that's, you know, in the teens or the twenties. And Earl Moore probably had more personal contact with it in the fifties and beyond than probably anybody else, and, uh, and he put the, um, a lot of people think it's a schoolhouse, and it's not. Uh, Earl Moore put the little bell up on the top and the cupola, which I believe they're going to try to salvage and save and maybe use in a little, you know, some type of a kiosk kind, kind of arrangement. So, um, but I do really appreciate someone asking about that, 'cause I think, um, we should be, every time we take something down in the city, questioning, are we doing the right process? And then, should we be salvaging some of it? Um, what do we do with the stuff we salvage? And, and those are questions that are really good to ask. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to address the council? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the findings of fact and approve Certificate of Appropriateness, uh, number two zero one one dash zero one dash zero three two for the Dunn Brothers Coffee Store Site Improvements Plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next public hearing is Summit Place Senior Housing Project. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, this is a public hearing that has come back from two previous meetings, and we also are going to be convening an HRA meeting, uh, following this public hearing as well, because the HRA needs to take action on the same item. And what we have is a resolution for, uh, Tax Increment District Redevelopment Plan Change. And Tax Increment District Fifteen was established in nineteen ninety-nine to provide for forty-three affordable housing units for seniors at Summit Place for a term of fifteen years. As part of that request, the owners have agreed to use additional TIF revenue generated from the units to provide for five more affordable renting, rental units within the existing building for a total of forty-eight affordable units. They have agreed to extend the term then to twenty, twenty-six, or twenty-six years from when the first increment was collected from the district. It's forecasted that the amount of TIF to be collected over the fifteen years is more than is needed to write down the rents on the affordable units, so then the rental affordability can be extended on all the units. And as I probably should have said before, Summit Place is a three hundred and twenty-unit senior rental project located at Flying Cloud Drive and Fountain Place directly south of the Eden Prairie Center. And as I mentioned before, this has been continued from the two prior meetings, uh, as official notice for this public hearing was published in the April twenty-first, two thousand and eleven Eden Prairie News. And I'd ask also, in addition to, we have this public hearing and the HRA meeting too, uh, there's a difference in terms of, of the action that we're taking and where the developers are at. So I'd ask that Ms. Jeremiah provide a, a little additional background on this project and where the Summit Place developers are at as well.
Thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers, but I want to
What I wanted to point out is that the development of the 80 additional units is not yet ready for your consideration. So, the project management agreement to specifically allow that project is not part of your action tonight. However, that wasn't really, um, part of the public hearing that we advertised. The public hearing was to amend the TIF plan. And in considering this and the fact that it's been continued several times waiting for the development, we really talked with our, uh, financial consultants with regard to the pros and cons of moving forward with the TIF plan amendment and decided it makes sense from staff's perspective. It's a policy question on the part of the council. And what this amendment would do would be to extend the term of the TIF district from 15 years to 25 years to ensure that the affordability for those senior units remains in this project. It would be due to expire in 2014. So, this would extend it another 10 years, ensure that those remain affordable. It would also provide the opportunity, should the construction move forward, to allow five additional units to become affordable. If that never takes place, it could allow the opportunity for us to pool any excess TIF funds from this district and use it to provide affordability elsewhere in the city. And that's the logic behind bringing this forward to you now, since we advertised the public hearing. The development still isn't quite ripe. We are meeting with the developer on Friday to talk about the status of the project, the details of the PMA, et cetera. We will very likely be bringing that back forward to you in the future. But if you're comfortable with trying to extend the duration of the affordability of this project and potentially provide additional opportunity either on this site or elsewhere, then we would encourage you to go ahead and, and approve the, the amendment to the TIF plan tonight. And I should point out as well that if you have more additional questions on the details, Jessica Cook from Ellers is here tonight to also help answer questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Case?
Mrs. Jeremiah, do extending TIF districts require the same but-for criteria requirements that initiating a TIF district would?
I believe so, yes. And we have looked at that as well as all of the costs associated with the initial project to make sure that, you know, all of this makes sense, um, and meets all of the, the criteria.
Who, um, does it have to pass muster with some agency at the state? Who looks at this and signs off or checks off?
We do get audited periodically with regard to our TIF districts, and I believe that's the way. There's no process now for the state to necessarily sign off on it, but through the audit procedure, they look at what we did and make sure that it, it all was up to snout.
Yeah, after July 1st, no one will be there to, to really care about us.
We're not counting on that.
All right. This sounds good.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing? Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this public hearing? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Then I'm going to call to order the HRA meeting. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes of the HRA meeting held on December 7th, 2010, which is the last time we had an HRA meeting.
So, moved.
Second.
Any items to crack there? No, I would assume that a couple of us can't vote on this because it was December, so we will abstain, two of us?
I, I think, um, we can ask the city attorney, but I think you still can vote. It's your choice if you wish to abstain.
Okay.
But you, you legally can vote.
That's correct. You can vote.
Okay. All right.
There, there would be a scenario where three of you might, three of us might not have been there.
Yeah.
So, it is possible. That probably makes sense wise.
Yeah. Don't kidding.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Now, a resolution rescinding HRA Resolution 2008-02 and adopting modifications to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number five, et cetera. Uh, Rick, do you, Mr. Getchell, do you want to add anything to that?
Mayor, I think this is the, the, the action that we're asking to take at the HRA in both the city level are the same. They just have, um, different resolutions for the different bodies, so that the action is still the same, the issue is still the same.
Okay. Any questions on that? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution rescinding HRA Resolution 2008-02 and adopt the resolution adopting a modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project number five, adopting a modified tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing, financing district number 15 thereafter, and pledging and assigning tax increments from district number 15 to the City of Eden Prairie.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. We're back within the city council meeting, and we're asking for basically the same motion within the confines of the city council meeting. So, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution rescinding Resolution 2008-71 and adopt the resolution adopting a modification to the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment project number five and the proposed adoption of a modification to the tax increment financing district number 15.
Second. Any questions on that? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Payment of claims.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please. Any items to question, first of all? Roll call. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lookins?
Aye.
That brings us to appointments, and we are going to be putting students on our commissions. Mr. Getchell?
Mayor and council, we are. Since 1992, we've had a program where we have students involved with being members, non-voting members of our commissions. And this coming year, 2011 and 2012 are no different. We are pleased to say we received 17 applications for commissions, and we were able to match interested students up with all of our different commissions. So, in several of these areas, many of these people requested to be on the specific commissions. In the fall, the commission terms for the students that are before you would run from September to December, and the spring term would run from January 2012 to April 2012. And we also have a special orientation session that we do in the summer before we hit that fall term with these 17 students. So, again, we have 17 applicants over our eight commissions, and we are asking for action for all their appointments this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gunderson, is it necessary to do this entire list and then take the vote? Or do you want us to break it apart?
Uh, I, do you want to answer that, Rick? I don't think it's necessary to read the entire list.
Oh, we don't even need to read the entire list?
We'd like to.
We'd like to identify the students.
I think she's asking, do we need to split it, or can we do it all in mass?
Oh, you can do it in mass.
Okay. All right. Yes. Let's do that. Mr. Aho, do you want to start with the motion?
Absolutely. I would move to appoint to the Arts and Culture Commission Jamie Bernard for the fall term and Nafisa Mohammed and Roseanne Awad for the fall and spring terms, and?
Appoint to the Budget Advisory Commission Charles Adams for the fall and spring terms, and?
And appoint to the Conservation Commission Kelly Halliwell for the fall term, Yasmin Atef Fahid for the spring term, and McKenna Campbell Potter and Rebecca Ebert for the fall and spring terms, and?
And appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Kevin Gadel and John Bowman for the fall and spring terms, and?
Appoint to the Heritage Preservation Commission Metta Lee for the spring term and Ian English for the fall and spring terms, and?
Appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Ramla Mohammed and Carrie Vlasic for the fall and spring terms, and?
Appoint to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Joseph Schmidt for the fall term and Katie Ostendorf and Liz Powell for the fall and spring terms.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Getchell, report on the state budget.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, as everyone is aware, the 2011 session, legislative, state legislative session, ended on May 23rd without a budget. And as of July 1st, if there is not an agreement on the budget or at least some type of lights-on bill, there will be a state shutdown. And there have been a lot of questions directed at the city about the effect that it would have on our community. And, and probably the first thing is, that depends. It depends a lot on what is deemed an essential or core service and how that is held up or not held up through potential adjudication or the court system. In terms of Eden Prairie, we're, we're in a, a good position, obviously, that we control our own destiny in terms of our revenue and our budgets, and we rely on most of our own, uh, revenue for operations. But there are several areas where we do rely on, um, some state funding for certain projects or maybe even grant funding for projects. Or projects that are not, uh, directly funded by the city but could be impacted. Probably number one, the 494-169 project is, is a project in which we've talked about of, of a potential delay. Again, everything I say depends on what would be deemed essential. So, we look at that project or even a city project, uh, such as Valley View Drive. We approve plans and specifications for that project, Prairie Center Drive, Valley View Drive. We have grant funds associated with that and some state funds. We may be able to begin that project and move forward using some of our own city funds and then be reimbursed at a later date, but at the same time, these projects require state approval. So, we're hurrying up right now and trying to get everything that we need to get into the state to get the project approved before July 1st. I think our city engineer has, has spoken to that as well, which makes you begin to think about certain things that are out there that require state approvals and state inspections, such as if, if a new restaurant were to come forward and request license, liquor license or other licenses that need to go through the state. If the state's not operating, uh, a operation like that may not be able to move forward. To get to the question about our current restaurants or current licensees, we're, we're current through the end of the year. So, if someone were to ask about renewals, the shutdown would have to go to the end of the year. So, in that case, I'm using the example of something new. And there are several other things where if we're looking at guide plan changes with projects that may come forward that need to go to the Met Council, would the Met Council be in operation at all? So, a lot of, there are a lot of things that may rely on our approval and need to go through other agencies, and if they're not there, that could be cause for concern. The point that we're at is just trying to identify what those are, just so we're aware, understanding that this may not be as expansive as some people may predict, but then again, it could be more expansive than some people predict. So, I think it's just a matter of being aware of the indirect effects that other agencies and groups, you know, the state have on our operations and how that could affect certain things that we do moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, I believe I know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyway. Um, I received a call from an Eden Prairie resident who is planning on replacing their deck this summer and is going to need a building permit and wasn't sure that she could get her builder information before July 1st. I told her I was quite sure she would be able to get her permit for her deck after July 1st, because that was a city function. But all such functions are going to be continuing in the city, correct?
You are correct.
And it might be nice to put a little blurb on our website, assuming there is a shutdown, informing people that, yes, they can still get their permits for any home, you know, repairs or decks or whatever, and to let them know that the, this is not going to affect specific city operations, because she was really quite relieved when I told her that she could, didn't have to really push her contractor that much to get her deck going.
Well, I, I think that's a good example of how people are sometimes confused about where certain permits and licenses go through. So, I think it's a great idea to get the word out there about certain projects. Again, um, not to sound negative, but electrical inspection is one area that in most municipalities, those are handled by the state. So, if you're dealing with electrical inspection, that could be an issue. But if you're dealing with the deck permits, the roofing permits, and other items such as that, there should be no problem with that whatsoever, and we'll try to communicate
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yeah, I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea either to link to, I think it's called BeReadyMinnesota.gov. I think that's the site, because they have frequently asked questions. And so, for folks who have other kinds of related questions, that might be a good site to have.
I agree. I think the League of Minnesota Cities, of which we're a member, is updating information daily as well, and they have, uh, some information on there. So, those are two good resources, definitely.
One area that could possibly be impacted is transit. A lot of transit funding goes through the Met Council. If the Met Council is shut down, that creates problems. But, um, Southwest Transit does not have their monthly meeting until next Thursday, I believe, next week. Um, so, a formal decision has not come from the commission, but the intent is to continue operations using, uh, reserve funds, which thankfully, we have some. So, we should be able to keep in operation without, um, any service impacts. But, again, we have voted on it, so.
Another link we should have, don't we?
Yeah.
To the city's website?
Definitely. Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Getchell? Okay. Then, uh, we have a few items from Park and Rack. The first is a donation from the Eden Prairie Soccer Club. Mr. Lothammer?
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. Um, we've been working as a city with the soccer club for a long time, and as you know, they're a very viable organization within the city that serves a lot of youth. Um, we've recently worked with them on two goals for, or two sets of goals for two fields over at Miller Park. Ours, uh, were in not good condition, and so, they have elected to help us purchase , uh, new goals and also nets to go with them. So, they are donating $4,000, uh, which we would, uh, spend on those goals to replace them and make them look better. So, we want to thank them for those, and we have a resolution or a motion to accept the donation this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Um, very nice of the soccer club. Any questions for Mr. Lothammer? Is there a motion?
I move to accept the donation from the Eden Prairie Soccer Club in the amount of $4,000 to fund a new set of sucker goals and new sucker nets at Miller Park.
Excellent.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. Uh, another donation from the Friends of the Art Center.
Yes, Your Honor, council members. Um, as you recall, several years ago, when we elected to accept the gift of the Art Center, there was a group that formed called the Friends of the Eden Prairie Art Center. And they, as a group, elected to be a fundraising mechanism that also worked with the Eden Prairie Foundation. And their goal was to raise money to help outfit the capital and make the Art Center operational. And we've been able to raise money through their organization as well as through staff, through grants, as well as, uh, connections with, uh, people that are interested in the Art Center. This group, um, has held many events, which you see, um, things like Middle School Art Night at CMS, Putting It All Together event in the garden room, jewelry making with Aurora Jewelers. They've really worked hard, and, um, they have, uh, put in a lot of time, and they are volunteers, and, um, they really feel that it's come a time when their efforts are, um, over as a group or as an organization, and that they really fulfilled those goals of making us operational at the Art Center. And, uh, we really believe that's true as well. Um, this $10,368.10 is the last of the dollars that they had, uh, earned and raised, and so, they're turning that back over to the city. I do want to let you know, though, that our efforts in fundraising and grant writing are not over as city staff. We've, over the last couple of years, had good success with that as well, and, uh, will continue to do that. Some of our efforts will be more so along the programming areas. We've recently received, uh, grants, um, from MRAC in order to be able to facilitate more programming, and, uh, we'll keep, uh, looking for those funds, uh, as our needs make them available. So, we want to thank them for all of their efforts. There was a, uh, small committee at the end that continued to work hard. Um, we have sent them letters of, uh, thank you, and, um, we'd want to recognize all the hard work that they did to make the Art Center very operational and in a good position.
Great. Thank you. And I'm glad you clarified that this is just the last of the dollars remaining in the Eden Prairie Foundation Art Center account. Eden Prairie Foundation Arts Center account. It's not the totality of what they raised. They raised quite a bit of money, and certainly were very influential and important to getting this whole project started. And it's wonderful to see the participation figures of classroom, or class registration, birthday parties and things like that held at the Arts Center. It's wonderful. Councilmember Aho?
My question for you, Mr. Lothammer, is what do we have left to do in terms of capital investment at the Arts Center? Is there any needs for specific things that we could utilize this time to inform people of those needs?
In terms of outfitting the building, we're in very good shape. We're looking at some advanced kiln processes. We're also, through our study that we're doing with some of our users, as we're doing surveys, looking at what are some other art types of areas that they're interested in us pursuing? We have all the, sort of what you would call the basics covered, of clay, of painting, of jewelry making. But now the next question is, are there other roads of types of art to go down, such as working with metals or other art mediums? And that would then dictate where would we go next with capital needs? Would we need to outfit a part of a room in order to make that available for the metal work or grinders or those types of things? We don't think that right now we're in a position to do that and make those decisions or make the best decisions with this. We would rather see this sort of sit in the bank and wait for us to kind of catch up with what some of those trends are, as well as determine where are those needs before we make too big a capital purchases, not knowing if we have the demand for that specific area. So we're kind of in that evaluation mode. In the meantime, as the mayor had pointed out, our registration for programs continues to grow and climb, and we're starting to get closer to capacity of the building.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to accept the donation from the Friends of the Eden Prairie Arts Center in the amount of $10,368.10 to fund the capital purchase items required for new arts programming at the Eden Prairie Arts Center.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. And thank you very much to that group for the donations raised, and please convey our appreciation as staff members, as city council, and as residents of the city to them for their efforts. Thank you. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Needing an adjourn.